Welcome to a special meeting of the Harahan City Council. Um, we, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Baudier.
Present.
Councilman Chatelain.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Landry.
Present.
Councilman Murray.
Present.
Mayor Mosca.
Present.
Police Chief Dickinson.
Present.
Fire Chief St. Seer is absent. And City Attorney Chrisell.
Present.
We have a motion by Baudier, second by Landry to take out of sequence, uh, number two, which is the permit. Uh, any opposed? All in favor?
Yeah.
Right. Madam Clerk, number two.
High content alcoholic beverage license application for Perrin's LLC, DBA Matt and Stacy's Perrin's, located at 2216 Hickory Avenue. Roy is shedding Stacy Perrin and Matthew Perrin.
Anybody want to move for anything?
We just got this yesterday, ma'am. Where exactly? Seymour.
At Seymour.
Oh, Seymour, okay. All right. I'm moving.
Yes. That's right. Uh, motion by Landry, second by Baudier. Any discussion? All in favor? Chief approved it. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Five days, no names. Next, Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Baudier, second by, uh, Landry to take out of sequence number three. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Five days, no names.
Uh, low content alcoholic beverage license application for Kim On's Noodle House, located at 6624 Jefferson Highway, and the name is Ha Vu.
Motion by Baudier.
It's low content, right?
It's low content, yep.
Yes.
Motion by Baudier.
Second.
Second by, uh, Fabley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Five days, no names, that passes. Madam Clerk, go to address the council.
You know, would anyone like to address the council?
Anyone wishing to address the council is welcome to do so at this time. Madam Clerk, all business? We have any all business?
No, sir.
Any business? We did two and three, we only have, uh, one. One is a request by the council to hold a special meeting to discuss the hiring of a new attorney to advise the council.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
The reason I called this, um, special meeting was to...
Can you get the mic close so I can hold it here?
The reason I called this special meeting here tonight is, uh, the planning and zoning is meeting next Wednesday night to discuss the, um, rezoning of the biggest parcel of land left, uh, in all of Jefferson Parish, uh, East Bank. And so, because it is so important to us, um, like I said in, uh, in the newspaper or on my, on my statement, that the serenity of this city needs to be protected, we all live in Harahan for a particular reason, and, um, we need to protect it and we need to make sure we're doing the right thing. And I feel as though this special meeting was, was needed tonight so we could discuss possibly, uh, the city council, uh, appointing our own attorney to guide us through this process.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
All right. Any, any discussion? Madam Landry?
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll wait. I'll wait, maybe reserve our right to a later discussion.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of having, you know, a second, a third party look at this interest here. I just feel it's the right thing to do for the city. I can live anywhere in the world. I choose to live in Harahan. Rest of y'all choose to live here, too. I just want to make sure we making the right decision.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Baudier?
I personally feel, um, this is kind of weighing heavy on my heart and soul with this one, and we just have so many things at stake here, and one is the, um, the attorney's fees. Um, I truly feel like we have worked for years to, to build the city and to build the personnel that we have here. I think that we have everything we need to move us forward in this project. I don't really see the need to spend another twenty-five-plus-thousand dollars to, to retain an attorney. Um, the city's struggling now with money. Um, however, I'm very open-minded to hear what all my, what all the peers and my councils have to say, and, um, that's just pretty much, I mean, just open-minded, I haven't really decided yet. I am leaning one way versus another, and, uh, but if they convince me, I'm, for sure can be swayed.
Yeah, I think the standpoint is, I don't know if it's an attorney that we need. I mean, I understand, maybe a, an economist, more of a guy like that, I don't know what an attorney, what questions he's going to answer for, for twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm the same with Councilman Baudier, I want to hear some more about it.
My fear, Councilman Landry, is that we start at twenty-five thousand, and where do we go from there? I mean, attorneys are very expensive. So, you know, and not, that's, what has this turned into, a, a hundred-thousand-dollar price tag?
Well, he won't get paid because we don't have it.
That's all right. And then we don't pay this attorney because we don't have to pay him, and now we're in a different kind of lawsuit.
I, I, again, I think it's, I, I like the, I like the idea of the, the third party, I do, but I don't think the attorney is the idea. I think it's some sort of, I can't even, I can't think of the name of the type of person. I'm looking, more like what Steve Villavasso is, a, a land use master planner. We do have him that we pay a retainer to, to have him for these types of group, I mean, these types of decisions. And I don't know if, I guess this is available to everyone, Mr. Villavasso's resume, it's quite extensive. But again, we, we'll, I'll listen. But I can tell you now, we don't have that kind of money right now. You can address the council as soon as, not right now, I mean, as soon as they can.
Councilman Baudier?
Present.
Councilman Murray?
Thank you, um, Mayor. Miss, and, and Hewitt came to me and asked me about the possibility of us looking at a attorney, a counselor. We brought up economists, we brought up real estate person, as a, and many other various people that could hopefully be all-in-one, all-inclusive for us, to be able to look at this, to be able to look at this issue and have a third party help us to make the best decision that we possibly could. I told her it was a great idea. We have, and we discussed the fact that we have already in our, in our arsenal of tools, we already have Mr. Villavasso, who I've worked with for almost twenty years, who has been a wealth, a wealth of knowledge to us. I spoke with him just yesterday. He is a phenomenal code writer, he is a phenomenal planner, he's worked on several different issues for us along the way, and I think Mayor Mosca was the one who found him, is that correct? In your first administration?
Uh, Mayor Paul Johnson hired him.
Oh, Paul did, okay. You inherited him. You had him.
I, I know you signed the contract.
Okay. You corrected the fact that we didn't have a contract, was that correct?
Well, it's, you know, we're taking on writing a completely new ordinance for the whole city.
So, here's, here's the situation, is that we have a phenomenal person in our Ms. already. We have also with us, uh, Mr. Jeff Charlet, who is our regulatory director, and, um, he, he's a very knowledgeable individual with a lot of, um, wealth of knowledge that he brings onboard with us. And I thought that this was a very, very good idea. We started mulling over what they could do to help us and what questions they could ask of us, and what different things they could do for us in any possibility, in any what-if situation. Said, that's a good thing, I think we'll go with that, I'd, I'd love to get it. Councilman Hewitt came up with a special meeting, so that's why we're here, and, and she can further explain her situation. So, in my thoughts about this, I said, hmm, a third party, someone, if I asked him a question, I would get the pros and cons on both sides of the issue, that would be independent and not having any sway one way or other, not living next door, not living down the street, gosh, not even maybe living in the city, and maybe don't even know what's going on with Colonial. And that could be a good thing and a bad thing, both in on and into itself, but the fact of the matter would remain that they would be independent, and that we would want to keep them as an independent person. So, that is the reason why I would like to see it happen. I believe that there are enough people out there qualified, and make no mistake about this, Mr. Villavasso is an enormous wealth. He's also an attorney, by the way. Now, he is employed for us as a, on an as-need basis from, he, he's employed by us on a, um, on a basis that we, as an ad-need, great person. My concern is, is that, can he be objective? He is, and believe me, the man I think is very inject, objective. This is a passionate issue, a passionate issue. I believe he can be extremely objective. Then I thought, maybe I'm overstepping my bounds here, that, why would I want to bring somebody in and, and maybe weigh the city, uh, another burden with an economic problem? We, I understand the mayor, and I was at, not at the last meeting, um, where the council was here in July, and it's my understanding, and I haven't gotten full disclosure on it yet, that we're somewhere between one-point-three and one-point-six million dollars out of budget, and I didn't know this. So, I'm still waiting on some clarification from that. That's a shocker to me. So, when it comes to trying ways, and I, and I'll address their issue, I think that the answer to that question is, can we not afford it? Can we not afford it? We are dealing with a twenty-million-plus project, the biggest one that this city has ever had in its possession. It is a phenomenal task for a small city that is grossly understaffed to be able to take on such a monumental task. A wise man once said, wise men know when they're not wise enough, that they don't have all there is to know. I confess, I don't know everything. I don't know if everybody does know everything. I need help. I think, and she will state her case, we need help, and that is why I want it, that we need to make sure that we make all the right decisions, whatever they are, good, bad, or indifferent, I want to hear all sides. Good, bad, or indifferent, I want to hear all sides. I need every possible tool in my toolbag to be able to pull out to make an intelligent, informed decision, because I am here for you. I am here for you, I was elected by you. I want to make sure that I make the right decision for each and every person here, and everyone in this city. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Hewitt?
As I stated, um, earlier when I first opened, that this meeting isn't to discuss our stance on the, on the property, what we want there, if we're for it, if we're against it, that's not what it's about. It's, again, not to be redundant, but to seek additional legal counsel who is an expert in land use, has court cases, and in this abundance, wealth of knowledge to tell us the pros and the cons, dot our i's, cross our t's, just to help us through this. As Cindy stated, this is, this is a twenty-million-dollar project. It's supposed to bring in over a million dollars' worth of revenue into our city, and we're going to be talking and bickering and arguing over spending twenty-five thousand dollars to get it right? That's amazing to me. We can't afford not to afford it. You know, um, in the past few days, this has become a little bit, uh, personal. This isn't personal to me. This is about you. I walked every street, I knocked every door, because I care about you. Maybe I'm naive, you know, I'm a mom, I'm a nurse, uh, I wasn't in politics, I've been doing it for three years, I'm learning. This is about you, the city of Harahan, the citizens, your property tax, if your home floods. This is about you. This isn't personal, this isn't me against the mayor, this isn't me against my councilmen, we're a team. We're all up here to work together to do the best for you, to make the best decision for our city, right? Yeah. That's what tonight's about. I have talked to three attorneys over the past few days that, um, have expertise in this, and they have all told me, this is not abnormal, this is what municipalities do, this is what cities do to get it right, this is what Jefferson Parish does. They always seek additional attorneys to put another eye on it. Tell me your view, maybe I missed something. We're human.
How would this process work, Councilman?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Any feedback, Council?
Uh, one more thing, um, again, Mr. Villavasso is not here, and I want to say that I have the utmost respect for him. Um, his resume was socialized to us this week, it is six to seven pages long. Every attorney I talked to over the past few days told me, he is the greatest, he's the best, he's an educator, he teaches people zoning, he wrote our ordinance. I agree, I think that's wonderful. I appreciate his expertise, and we want him on our team, that's why we've hired him as our city planner. Dave Chrisell here, utmost respect for him, him and I have spoken over the past few days, and I'm going to ask Dave a question.
Can we, um, finish your statement, and then I'll speak, and then you can ask questions?
Sure. Mr. Chrisell and I have spoken about this throughout the past few days, and he has stated to me, there is no downside to this, there is only upside, this is a positive. Just like an attorney who's practicing in their own law firm, they would go call experts and additional folks to help them through a case, this is just normal. And I don't know why it's being seen as abnormal, or me trying to do something wrong, it could be twenty-five thousand dollars for us to get a twenty-million-dollar project right.
Thank you. First of all, as a clarification, every month, uh, each councilman gets a copy of the up-to-date budget and their stat from the clerk every month. So, if a person reads that, they know the predicament of the city. I want to apologize to anyone I may have offended by my opinion, because, um, as mayor of the city, my responsibility is to try and ensure that the city runs efficiently and effectively. That takes money, and I'm doing the best that I can to accomplish that task. Now, in that task, I have opinions, just like any of you under the Constitution, I have my own opinions. The council, they have their own opinions. The difference between me and the council is, is that the council gets to vote on ordinances. I do not get a vote on an ordinance. And I may talk to one or more of all the councilmen and express my, uh, First Amendment right to articulate a position, but that doesn't mean they're going to believe me or take what I say as the truth, or... It's, it's, it's a system where each of us are going to articulate things, and all I'm saying is that I apologize to any of you that have taken what I've articulated as being vulgar, or negative, or whatever. I'm a person who likes to turn the other cheek, so if you beat me up on one side, I won't give you a chance to beat me up on the other. I do not hold a grudge, and I'm going to still endeavor to do, uh, what I think is in the best interest of the city, as each of these individual council people are going to try and do what's in the best interest of the city. Now, um, Steve Villavasso is on his way over here. He's been with the city, I don't know, I guess fifteen or twenty years, but he is a professional urban and regional planner, and a land use zoning attorney for over thirty-nine years. He's worked for major corporations in the environmental industry, consulting firms, private land developers, and for government throughout Louisiana, Mississippi, and nearby states. He runs the professional planning firm of Villavasso Associates, and they provide professional services in the areas of zoning, the areas of zoning, land use planning, land use planning, master plan development, civil and regional planning, and the law. He represents clients throughout Louisiana and the United States. He's involved in many projects, and he holds a degree in a Bachelor of Science in Economics and a Master of Urban and Regional Planning, both from the University of New Orleans and a Juris Doctorate from Loyola. He has served the Louisiana chapter of the American Planning Association for twenty-six years, excuse me, of service. He is presently the president of the Louisiana chapter of the American Planning Association. He serves on the National Executive Committee. He is one of only four hundred people, one of only four hundred people, who is a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners, the highest peer present, presented honor in the profession, in the profession of urban planning. He's a charter member of the Louisiana chapter. He is an adjunct professor of land use regulations, land use and zoning, urban and public affairs for the University of, um, New Orleans, and he currently trains planning officials throughout the state, including ours. He trains all of the Harahan, um, appointees to the planning and zoning board and the appeals board. He is, um, he was the master planner for Cameron Parish. He served on the master planning team for the city of New Orleans. He's on the recovery planning program for the city of Lafayette. He's a senior land use planner and zone manager for the city of New Orleans. He is a former assistant attorney, legal attorney, for the city of New Orleans. He's the former director of the mayor's office of analysis and planning. He's been the project manager of many projects throughout this state and Mississippi. He was the legal land use and zoning manager for Bossier City. He's the project director for the city of Harahan in connection with the comprehensive plan for the city. That plan was adopted in two thousand and one. He also, uh, in, in, created the, the map, which we now use, the land-based classification system. That effort, the Harahan effort, led to an award-winning, uh, picture database, which was presented to him in nineteen ninety-eight in Seattle, Washington, the Harahan Concept.
Excuse me, ma'am. Can you take a quick... Is that his, you, you are reading from his, um, entire resume, correct?
Yeah.
You're gonna, you plan on reading all eight pages of it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All eight pages of it?
Yeah.
Well, he's got the mic.
Huh?
He, uh, was about with the Jefferson...
Mayor, can I, can I interrupt you one more minute, please, sir?
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, I believe that all of these people, all of our councilmen have received that.
Mm-hmm.
As you say with minutes all the time, is that there's a copy out there for them, we'd be glad to give all of our people here, but we're all...
Cindy, you know, let me tell you, you, you're asking, this is a man that we've both known for fifteen or twenty years, okay, and, and the mayor's reading his, his resume.
Resume, right.
And we have all touted how great of a man he is, and how great of an attorney he is, and a planner he is, and, but, we don't, I, I don't want to use the word trust, but you can't be ejected on this project, a person that's a friend of mine that I respect highly.
Oh, absolutely not.
So, I do want people to know how, how...
Absolutely not, I wouldn't believe so. My point was just being...
So, if you ask me to vote like that against a friend, because I, to me, it's, it's almost a vote against him, if you ask me about the whole thing, not...
Understand, understand this, and I was talking, I was talking to the mayor, but...
I'm sorry, Dan.
Understand this, no, that's okay. Understand this, we're all very well aware of his accomplishments, his accolade, accolades.
I don't know if you are...
Maybe, maybe ever, I have read it, so I received the same thing you did, and I've read it.
Well, if you would have read the budget every month, you would have known what the problem of the city was.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for that observation. Uh, so, anyway, back to what I was asking you, um, is that, um, my, my question is, is that if these people, I, I, I'm sure you're, you're waiting to have him come and speak.
He is coming.
Okay, he is coming, okay. Um, I understand this, we're still, us, in discussion about whether we should hire somebody, not...
No, 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 it's not set this evening to hire anybody.
No, 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 you're, you're seeming like, I think we were set for discussion to hire someone.
Right, and, and we're in discussion.
Oh, and you're discussing his? Okay, so you're going to read his? Okay. All right, I was just checking, because if you were doing that...
Don't we have other resumes?
No, we don't have any others at the moment.
Oh, so we had three other resumes.
No one said that. You were told that we had resumes?
We had three.
Where did you hear that?
Uh, rather than I say.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right, we also...
But I spoke to her on the phone last night.
Okay. Wait, wait, excuse me, Mayor, can I, can I speak, please? Let me clarify my conversation with Mr. Landry last night, as I stated to all of you...
Wait a minute, if you want to clarify something, let's wait till after I make my statement.
Okay.
I have the floor, and you're welcome to comment.
Yes, sir, you do. Absolutely. Uh, just pardon me, and I apologize, but I just want to make the statement that we're all very aware of his, of his thing, and if you need to, if you feel the need to read it...
I'd like the public, I'd like our citizens to be aware of this man, who presently works for the city for seventy-five dollars an hour when called upon, who has guided us through every planning, land, zoning issue we've had in the last twenty years. I'd like the public to be aware that he is available to our city, and he's up to date. This alleged meeting is going to take place next week. For any lawyer to be involved in a meeting next week to get up to date, spend a lot of hours over the weekend, but this man is knowledgeable already, because he's been there. He, um, was project director for, um, I'm sorry. He was the master planner for the city of Slidell, the city of Kenner, the city of Harahan, the city of New Orleans. He, he had Armstrong Park, the Plaza de Italia, two of his projects. He was a director of planning and environmental affairs with New Orleans East. He was project and principal planner for the growth management plan for Saint Tammy Parish. He's also been, at the request of the president of Honduras, uh, been a consultant to their county comprehensive planning system. He's an adjunct professor at the University of New Orleans. He teaches land use and zoning law for fifteen years, graduate course. He teaches growth management and environmental tools, tools and techniques for planners. He's the only qualified professor to teach land use course in the area of small growth and sustainability. That's like our city, small city. He is a grant writer for various planners, he's been a guest lecturer at the University of Tulane in Arkansas, Mississippi. He has, um, spent seven years of national and international study in a project that began in nineteen ninety-six as the Brownfield Redevelopment and Planning Project. This is a project that includes New Orleans. He's published several books, uh, several magazines, he's spent time with waste, solid waste management and planning, he's been, um, a lecturer on landfills, site planning and development, uh, sewage. He's been a lecturer on landfills, site planning and development, sewage. He has been the project director for a composting project in southeast Louisiana. He has received many leadership awards and has contributed public service throughout the community, to various cities, including our own. He is, two thousand and four, he was elected to College of Fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners. In nineteen ninety-nine, he received the Outstanding Project Award in Louisiana. He has written forty periodicals, three law review articles, and he holds licenses in law, as I said, urban and regional planning, and economics and management. He's a United States Navy veteran, and a Vietnam War veteran. He currently teaches at UNO. Now, I read that resume because I wanted the public to understand that I too believe we need someone to advise this council, and I wish the council would consider any questions they have given to Mr. Valavasso. If they are unhappy with the answer, come see me, we'll talk to the city attorney. If they're unhappy with his answer, then we can decide if we want to hire a brand-new attorney for some price. Now, there's a law that we abide by, it's called the municipal code, it's called the Larson Act for the State of Louisiana. The Larson Act gives the mayor the sole authority to make the decision if the council recommends someone to hire him or not. It's Article Revised Statute Thirty-three, four oh four. Am I right, Mr. City Attorney?
Forty-four.
Thirty-three, four oh four.
Four oh four. Can I correct that?
Attention to contrast, correct.
All right, so I just want to explain to everybody.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna be very attentive to what they're saying, and I want, I want to make sure everyone gets all their answers answered, and if they come up with someone other than Mr. Valavasso, which he's already on board, is ready to go, price is right, then I will take that into consideration and make a decision within a few days. But I'm attentive to try to fulfill your needs, and as I said, if you have any questions, write them up, give it to Mr. Valavasso, see what his answer is. One person told me today, we really are looking for an attorney that can help me with drainage. I said, well, I don't know, land use drainage, Mr. Valavasso's here.
Please call in record that Mr. Valavasso's here.
Stand up, Mr. Valavasso, we just, I just read your credentials, I was buying a little time so you could be here. Everyone up here saying your praises. And I just got done telling the council that I am gonna invoke Louisiana Revised Statute Thirty-three, four oh four, to make the determination if we hire a lawyer or not. Anybody have any motions or questions?
I guess I would address Mr. Landry's, Councilman Landry's comment, but before I do, I just want to be very clear. We are not interviewing Mr. Valavasso. We all here have the utmost respect for his expertise, his tenure, his years of service to our city, his seven-page resume. As I said, every attorney I've talked to over the past three days has sung his praises. This is not an interview for Mr. Valavasso. He's employed by our city. He's our city planner, and that's what he's here to do for us, and we appreciate that, and we, he is exemplary. What I told Mr. Landry when we spoke last night was that I was doing my homework. I wouldn't call a special meeting if I wasn't gonna go do some work to, to come to some conclusion of the meeting. I have been calling attorneys, I'm asking for their resumes. Hopefully, if the mayor and everyone here tonight decides to agree with me, and we can make a motion, and we can approve that, yes, we will open up interviews, and we will talk to additional attorneys who have land use experience to help us through the process. As Ms. Murray says and alludes to, to add to our toolbox, in addition, Jefferson Parish and any other municipality that you call does this, you call additional counsel in. Again, I'm gonna say, this is the biggest parcel of land in all of east Jefferson Parish. Every attorney I talked to said that. We would be crazy not to do this to protect ourselves. This is not personal. I appreciate Mr. Valavasso. Every attorney I talked to appreciates his knowledge. I appreciate Mr. Corcel. I'm not doing this to hurt anyone. We're on the same team.
Uh, Mr. Valavasso.
So I'm gonna, I wanna, so what I said to Mr. Landry last night was, I'm gonna do this homework, I'm gonna try and find some resumes, and gosh, it would be really great if we could vote on it tonight, and we could have someone there for planning and zoning next Wednesday. Is that gonna happen? No. And I'm sure that was very overzealous on my part to think, but that was the comment I said to him, and I just wanted to clarify what I said. That would be wonderful.
Then I completely misunderstood you, because you said you had it on your computer, and you were gonna email it to us.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, it just didn't go that way route, but that's what I hope to do in the next, that's, no, you didn't hear wrong, I just clarified. I hope to do that in the next few days.
And how did you, how does this, how would you think this process would work? Do we, do we get resumes?
We can't hear what you're saying.
How would you think this process would work? We would get resumes emailed to us, and then we would actually interview them at what times, or, or would we just go from, I mean, do we call another meeting to interview attorneys?
Well, I mean, I don't know the exact process, that's what I would assume, Councilman Landry, that we would look over resumes, and I would.
Would you have to put out requests for proposals?
No, this isn't an RFP, no, sir, no, it's a PSA, it's a professional service agreement. So I would think, yes, that Mr. Valavasso will be brought in, we'd want him to look over the resume, wouldn't we? We would want Mr. Corcel to look over it. We're a team, we're doing this for our city, to protect our city.
I would, Mr. Valavasso, I've invited the council to write you or ask you any question they want, so maybe you could satisfy their concerns that we don't need another attorney to pay, that you do have the expertise and knowledge to advise them legally. You're willing to do that, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor, just a quick question. I know we have a motion on the floor right now.
What?
There was a motion from, you got it right, Ms., there was a motion on the floor to discuss hiring, and we are discussing that, okay? And I second that motion, that we would like to hire somebody, so, to discuss that. And we never did get a vote on that, we've been talking about the discussion of voting of, to discuss. So I think right now we should call for the vote, so that we can truly discuss this like the motion is on the floor right now.
Let's wait for Councilman Landry to get back.
One thing I'd like to add, if you don't mind, Mayor?
Yes.
And if Mr. Corcel could either agree, or that this is a conversation we've had, and fellow councilmen have told me this as well, when we are discussing sometimes planning and zoning, and we have questions, and Mr. Valavasso's our expert, our city planner, and we bring him up to the podium, and we ask these questions, and, and sometimes it might get to the point where we say, what is your legal opinion, Mr. Valavasso? And I've been told by other councilmen, and I've seen it, and Mr. Corcel agreed that sometimes, maybe not all the time, Mr. Valavasso will defer to Mr. Corcel to make the legal, to give the legal counsel the legal comment on the issue. So, with that being said, Mr. Valavasso's our city planner, Mr. Corcel is our city attorney, who specializes in municipal law and family law, not land use, not real estate. So, all we're doing is if Mr. Valavasso usually, or ninety-nine percent of the time, will defer to Mr. Corcel, our city attorney, and Mr. Corcel says there's no downside to this, there's only upside to add to our team, what are we doing wrong to hurt our city? This isn't a personal issue. Our team is wonderful, we're trying to elaborate and embellish it.
Okay, I see that.
Let me, let me say one thing, I think that Mr. Valavasso probably does that out of deference, but I can tell you that he is qualified to make a legal opinion, that I can tell you, and, and look, I'm not, I don't have, I don't have a dog in the hunt, I've told each and every one of you, if I've spoken to you, I don't see a downside. And there may be budgetary issues, I don't involve myself in that, I don't, I don't see a downside, but I will say this about Mr. Valavasso, and he can agree or disagree, but he actually has more qualifications, I think, or as many than anybody we can find. He's actually probably the only attorney-land-use combination that's been qualified as an expert in numerous courts. It's very difficult to do, you get beat up by the other side, you're in front of a state or federal judge who has to decide whether or not you're an expert, and if you're an expert in court, you can make a legal determination. I don't know if he does it out of deference, or what he does, but he is qualified to do it, just as I am, but I will add, I don't see a downside to having more heads than two, and I mean that. We do it every day in our normal practice. I will reach out, I'm not saying you have to do it or don't do it, but I do think that Mr. Valavasso could probably tell you guys, he's more than qualified to make legal opinions.
Uh, let me ask you this.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I, can I ask about four oh four? I mean, can we do it? I mean, whose opinion we get with that? I mean, if I'm reading this right, we don't even, we can't, we don't have the power to do it.
What did you clarify, clarify what you said?
The RS, RS four oh four. Basically, the way I read it, and you can explain it to me better, is we can't hire a lawyer.
Look, we have an ordinance that states that before the council, the mayor, including the mayor, the mayor, the council, or the police chief, before any of you guys, as a body, or the mayor or the chief want to hire an attorney, other than me, and it exceeds five hundred dollars in cost, there has to be a vote by this council. The issue comes up, and it's not for tonight, but you brought it up. The issue then comes up enforcement. This is not an ordinance, it's, it's a motion, and that's legal, and that, binding would be the issue. You guys, as a council, vote for it, then you may have a dispute with the mayor, and I'm not saying there would or would not be a dispute, but you bring it up. The mayor is the only one in a Larson Act municipality who has the ability to enter into a contract on behalf of the city. You guys do not. That is different to other parishes and municipalities that have charters. But under Larson Act, and there were phone calls made by certain people today to the Louisiana Municipal Association, who have confirmed that that is indeed the situation. However, there are always situations or exceptions to everything. Issue is enforcement. If you guys voted tonight to hire a third-party attorney, land use expert, those would, you know, whatever you want to call it, then you would have to rely upon the mayor to enter into that contract. And there's not gonna be any expert out there, and these experts, you know, they're not cheap, they usually get retainers, anywhere from five to twenty-five thousand, depending on who they are.
Retainer?
Retainers, yeah, and then they bill against them. Experts are paid high rates, I think that someone would probably work on behalf of a municipality or city for a lesser rate. But in my general practice, when we hire experts, they're anywhere from five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars an hour, in all fields, whether it's criminal, family, real estate, what have you. But the mayor would then have to enter into a contract with this individual, and if the mayor chose not to do that, you guys would, would have a decision to make, and that decision would be, one, to have a conversation with him and say, hey, man, are you gonna do this? This is the will of the council. If he refused, then you would have to, more than likely, take him to court.
So we couldn't override him with five votes, we'd actually have to?
You, you guys can't enter into a contract.
No matter what.
But we have to, if I'm not mistaken, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm reading the law incorrect, but when the mayor enters into a contract, before he can sign that contract, he has to bring that contract to the council, so that.
It depends on what it is.
He has to bring that contract to us, for approval.
But this, we're talking about the issue right now, if you guys want to engage in a contract.
Sure. So if, if we decide, if he brought a contract to us, that he said, well, wait, I have found someone, this is the person I believe in, I'd like to enter into a contract with that person, he would have to then forward it on to us, we would have to approve it, and then he could sign it.
Before he can hire an attorney for over five hundred dollars.
Right.
It requires a majority vote of his council.
Right, right, and.
So both of you.
But we can initiate the process.
You can.
We can initiate, but we have to ask the mayor.
We can vote to hire, we just need to depend on him actually signing the contract.
Look, there was issues going back, we don't need to rehash those, but the ordinance was put in place for a certain reason, okay? There was, there were allegations that one particular entity was paying too much in attorney's fees.
This is the Larson Act and hold, not this.
No, this is an ordinance by the city.
By the city.
So the city reined that in, and didn't make it specific to any one body, when I say body, I'm talking about council, mayor, police, chief of police. So the, there were two ordinances, the final one, though, was made uniform and added the chief of police, so now, before anybody in the City of Harahan can hire an outside attorney for more than five hundred dollars, you have to have a majority vote of you guys. So the council has to vote, so if the mayor did want to hire his own attorney, he would have to have your approval. That's by ordinance. Contracts are different, okay? We got a little bit further out, but what I'm saying is, we're using a reverse situation where you guys decide you want someone, and he has to enter into the contract.
So let me ask you this, if the possibility exists that there is, and let's call it, instead of an attorney, let's, let's call it a consultant, whether he is an attorney of this, that, or the other, but that he is a consultant of which to be a third-party person who will, we're deeming that they would want to be a third party and be unbiased in any way, shape, or form to any of the parties that be, then, my question to you is, that if we had someone who was willing to either pay for it, or to do it on pro bono, what would our course be then?
Well, I think if somebody was wanting to do pro bono, you guys would just have to approve him, because you can't, and you gotta be careful with that.
Right.
But a contract's a contract, right?
You gotta be careful with that, because we, there's liability associated with somebody that's doing work for the city, so, you know, that's something I don't.
And they would have to have their own errors.
I don't want to address tonight, I don't want to address that tonight.
Sure.
We could clarify that.
David, you serve a contract with them as a pro bono.
Right, right.
There's still gonna have to be principles, policies, protocol, and an understanding.
Sure, so in all of our contracts, we should make sure that we have somebody with their errors and omissions, insurances, and so forth, so that even if they were to give us pro bono work, that we'd have to make sure of that.
Yes, and, and it depends, we certainly would want someone insured.
Absolutely.
And in this field.
What field are we talking about?
Land use.
Or whatever field it is, and, and whatever field it is, because he suggested a.
When you go to court, you have experts, you have experts in land use, you have experts in real estate, real estate.
Well, do we need an expert in drainage?
We have a bias, bias engineer.
But I'm saying, should we look for a consultant?
I think we have one.
We have one.
Yeah, but I don't know if that person's biased or not.
But this, I think we need to get this, to see if we can do it, to get that straightened out, and Councilman Yehud, you've spent two or three days on this, at least, and now, if we decide to do this, this is gonna, it's gonna be a timely.
Sure.
Journey, I mean, we're gonna have to interview good resumes, it's gonna take a lot of time, often not, if we can't do it.
You mean if the, if the mayor doesn't follow through on the professional service agreement that we request?
They're gonna miss the plan and zoning.
I guess he could, that's his choice, that's, that's his purview. He could, he could go against what we recommend?
We can vote for it, and the mayor can go against it, and we recommend an attorney, and.
Yeah, and that, and that's the issue that has been avoided in this city for quite some time, I've been here since nineteen ninety-nine. We haven't had that issue again, we've had it a few times, but for a long time, we haven't had a feuding council and mayor or police.
Can the council vote on that tonight, or do they have to hold another meeting?
Pardon me?
Can the council vote on someone tonight, or do they have to hold another meeting?
I don't, I don't think they have intentions of voting on it.
I think the agenda says we're just discussing.
We're just discussing, and we haven't finished our, our motion still on the, we still have a motion. Mayor, can I call for the question, that we go ahead and, and take care of this motion that we have out on the, out on the floor for, that it is, right now, is that we approve that we can discuss this, because I know we were all doing it, and the motion still lays out there.
A motion by Murray.
Second.
Second by Hewitt.
Actually, it was up first.
To decide if we want to discuss this at all, anyone?
That's, that's what was on it.
We never did.
And, and we never did that, so let's make sure that we're doing our legal process and our due process, and making sure it's right, because, you know, dot in the i's, cross the t's, make sure we do it, and that's why we have our attorneys here, and he would have come up with the same thing, that's, that's not a problem.
A little bit late, Mr. City Attorney.
So, so here the point, no, because we were discussing, five yays?
Five yays.
Okay, so.
We approve what we've been doing for the last hour.
Right.
Exactly. Exactly. Because that's what it was about. So now that we've discussed it, and we are proving that we're discussing it, and we've heard someone's resume, now what do we do, folks? So, we're discussing the fact...
Well, I'd like to ask Mr. Villavasso a question. You would certainly entertain any written or verbal questions the council has addressing the concerns they have about, about which I'm not sure yet, because I don't know what their concerns are. But whatever they are. As a land-use expert, as a land-use attorney. As a land, and I included that resubdivision and rezoning issues, right?
Thank you, because that'd be just something you'd continue to do.
You don't know anything about plumbing or electricity, right? Can't talk to you about sewage or drainage.
So now I have a motion on the floor that we enter into some form of process to take a look at other resumes to help our arsenal that we have here for, we, to help and continue to help Mr. Villavasso and our attorney, and Jeff Charley, so that we can see if there are other people out there that can help us to work in this wonderful opportunity that we have coming before us.
That's a motion?
Yeah, just a motion.
Motion by Murray? Second by Hewitt?
That we are doing...
All in favor?
My specific, my speci...
I don't...
If I could clarify, my specific motion.
Wait a minute. Murray had the floor, I'm sorry. So you could amend her, her motion if you want.
I'm clarifying the motion. The motion...
Withdrawn.
We have a, we're trying to formulate a motion between Councilman Hewitt and Councilman Murray. What is the motion?
To clarify the motion. I move to hire a practicing attorney with expertise in land use to advise the council with respect to issues involving the property formerly known as Colonial Golf and Country Club. I move that the selected practicing attorney be employed by the city at a rate of no more than 250 dollars per hour, and his or her legal services should not exceed 100 hours.
All right, hold on. Can she do that this time, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, but who are you moving to hire?
We're not hiring anyone tonight. On the agenda, it was to discuss.
Councilman Hewitt, what retain fee would cap it at?
Well, I, I sought counsel from Mr. Corcel, so maybe he can walk through the process on how we can do this motion.
Can she make that motion tonight?
Let's see. Yeah, I think she can move, but my issue with that is, for tonight, if you're moving to hire someone, or if you're moving to...
Microphone.
Open the process?
Yeah, if you're, if you're moving to hire someone, then I think we should move to hire a particular individual. Or you should move to open the process to...
Correct. She's welcome to open the process.
I think that would be better. But I will tell you that she did consult me on fees. And I told her that to get an expert, and I said it earlier, generally, you're talking 400 to 1,500 dollars an hour, but I think they would work for the, for the city for less. So I suggested an hourly rate not to exceed 250 dollars, which is why that reads that way. And based upon my conversations with her and an estimated amount of time that she felt and that I felt, we came up with 100 hours. That will also be if someone, if you did find another expert that you wanted to hire, I don't think you're going to get somebody interested if they're going to work five hours. You know, I don't think so.
The 25,000, the retainer, that doesn't go toward the hourly rate there. That's his...
It does. It is. It is. Basically, you, that person would have to bill the city at whatever hourly rate. And that just says not to exceed. If they agree to do it for 50 dollars an hour, you got it. 200 dollars an hour. And not to exceed...
He doesn't get to play by the grant and then pay him on top of that.
No. Now, different experts work different ways. They may require a retainer upfront, or they may just agree to bill the city with an understanding that they'll get paid.
I feel a lot more comfortable with that.
How long, uh, my...
But I, but I don't know. You got to talk. That's why it's better. If we're going to appoint somebody, you need to talk to that person.
How long of a period of time do they have to submit their application?
Their resume?
We can do it no matter what. We don't need, we don't need anybody's permission to go out and look for somebody to help us, do we?
We can set our own sales, we can set our own sales a deadline.
Do you need to vote on this, or what?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, how it works, Mayor.
The selection process will be when?
Exactly the question.
We're trying to figure that out.
I guess it could be several things. If we find someone that we want, we could call another special meeting.
To begin the process to hire an attorney, or an expert land use, whatever you decide to call it, for those numbers.
Well, probably the most important meeting this person can go to is going to be next Wednesday.
We need a vote to do that? We need a...
So he would miss that meeting, right?
Because the vote that you need is if you're going to hire someone. That is what our ordinance discusses, and that's why I'm saying, any one of you can independently always talk to someone that you think is an expert. You can do that.
Sure.
And you can ask that person if...
Won't cost the city anything.
Yeah, if that person is interested in being retained by the city, or if that person's interested in helping the city pro bono, or what have you. But I think, we're all kind of jumping the gun. The ordinance that we've been discussing requires a majority vote of the council to retain the attorney. To pay an attorney over 500 dollars.
So, right now, so, right now, we can't vote to put a retainer aside of 25,000 dollars and hold that until we find the attorney?
Well, what I, what line item do you want to take?
You got budget issues. You got line item issues. Before, I mean, I'm not, I'm just telling you, we're getting in...
What line item do you want to use for the money?
I would want to take my salary and give it up to hire a legal counsel.
Okay.
And that won't...
I would do the same.
And that, and that wouldn't require a line item change. And that wouldn't require a line item change.
I would do the same.
I, I have a comment, too. I know we can find the money.
Yes.
And Councilman Shadalein and I were talking about this today. We can find the money. This is the most important thing that's ever happened to the city of Harahan in its history. And I, too, if, if we look through all of our books and we go line by line and we can't find the money, I will certainly give up my entire salary in, in 2014.
Well, let me ask you this.
Everybody's willing to do that.
My suggestion, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mayor, would you be willing to give up your salary, too, for us? No.
It was only 800 dollars a month, so...
Let me, let me ask you this.
The man makes a few dollars more than us.
Let me ask you this. Would you at least ask Mr. Villavasso your questions? And if you don't get the answer you want, then hire somebody.
Mr. Villav...
Why, why would you want to do that?
I don't know what the questions are going to be.
You don't have any.
You don't know that.
What is, this person, would you agree?
You don't know that.
That the most important, the first important meeting this person should attend is September 4th? Would anyone disagree with that?
No, absolutely.
Would you agree with that?
I wish, I wish we could appoint someone and find someone to attend.
So no one would be available to do that?
We can go out and look for somebody anyway, the way I understand it.
The three I spoke to said, I'd love to do it. So I just need to get everyone set up to meet them and interview them. I don't know if the mayor can, can construct a PSA before Wednesday.
I don't know. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm willing, you need to lobby me during the week. Because right now, I'm going to invoke 404. You need to come to me during the week and convince me this is necessary. Because right now, it's not going to happen.
So, Mayor, you wouldn't be willing to add something else extra in your toolbox? I'm going to ask you a question, just real quick, if I may.
I have...
Do you have people to help you?
I, I, the only way I would be willing to do that is if it doesn't delay the project.
Mayor, do you think this is going to happen in three months? This, this thing going through?
I don't know.
It would, you just told me you thought it would.
I, I don't know. What I said was, I don't want to delay it.
Okay, delay what?
Any meeting. Any meeting. A meeting, a public hearing, and a vote by the council.
Why, why would seeking special help delay all that?
Because that person'd have to catch up to what, whatever the agenda is.
And, Mayor, you're not willing to allow your councilmen to have extra people to help them out, one way or the other?
Well, it's a balancing right now. And if you disagree, let me tell you. But I'm of the opinion that the council should either vote yes or no on the issues, because if not, we're going to lose tenants.
So, so you're saying that we need to rush our decisions? And not, oh, wait a minute, let me finish. That I need to rush my decisions? I need to not bring into contact anybody I need in my arsenal to make an informed, proper decision, because someone may lose tenants?
Can you give me one question you want to ask this person?
I'd like to ask the question, Mayor, to you. That's not the point here.
That is the point.
No, sir.
I haven't heard one question from any one...
The point is, Mayor, it hasn't gotten to us yet, Mayor. It's out, right now, it's sitting on the Planning and Zoning Board. Do they have everybody in their arsenal that they're able to speak with?
Councilman Murray?
Yes, ma'am.
You know...
I'll take, uh, we just got this packet five minutes before the meeting. So do I have questions? I haven't opened it yet.
Yep.
So, no, I don't have any questions, because I haven't opened the envelope that I received at 6:55. I appreciate this information. I think that the developers and Mr. Georges, who owns the property, is doing everything that they need to do above board. They've made application exactly how the city has said they should. They have given us this wealth of knowledge of information that we have to study. But do I have questions tonight, when I received a folder at 6:55? I don't have them tonight. I will tomorrow. I will Saturday. I will Monday. But after I review what I just received before the meeting, we will compose questions.
Can, can you take as long as you want to review that? Ask your questions to Mr. Villavasso. If he can't answer them, then certainly I would consider bringing someone else along. Where's the money coming from?
We just told you, we're giving up our salaries.
Yep, that's a non-issue at this point.
Mayor?
Take off the money.
I believe, I believe they purchased this property back in March of 2011. I, I might have, might have the months wrong, but it was in 2011. They filed the application in August 7th, 2013. They had a long time to figure what they wanted to do. They want to give us 30 days to figure what we want to do? I mean, 30 days, I mean...
Isn't, uh, the, the, the applications that have come before this? There's...
There's, sir, I, I disagree. There's never been an application on the books for the city of Harahan to actually look at that piece of property. There's been one that went to Planning and Zoning, and it was pulled before Planning and Zoning ever heard it. There has never been one to come to this board at a meeting for us to see. There has never been. Do, am I correct? Does everybody agree with me? You've been with me for what, how many years now?
15.
It's never hit our desk. They said they were going to do it, but they've never done it. And you're asking us, and I agree with Councilman Shadalein, that they took 15 months to get their act together, and you're asking me to not only tie my hands behind my back to get a job done, but you're telling me, oh, by the way, wait a minute, you need to get this done in 30 days?
Well...
Mayor, I'm sorry, that, I can't ask that of any human being.
All I'm asking you is to take your due diligence, study whatever you want to study. If you don't get the, if your question isn't answered by Mr. Villavasso, who's already on staff, then let's get somebody else.
My constituents have not even seen the application. They have not had a chance to come to the podium and ask the Planning and Zoning Board yet their questions. And you're expecting me to spit out questions now? All I am asking for is the opportunity that will afford us, if we decide that we need one, that we have our card in place already, so that we may invoke... Mayor, excuse me, we have these questions, and Mr. Villavasso answers them, and Mr. Corcel answers them. But, Mayor, I'd like another opinion on this, because I think that sometimes three heads are better than one. You're going to tell me that I have to put my hands behind my back, and I have to make the, the decision to have my body cut?
Absolutely, but why you have to do that? No.
Do you get my, do you get my, do you get my passion over this, Mayor?
If we put, if we put someone on retainer for 100 hours, and we only use them for 10 hours, we pay them for 10 hours. That's not the case.
How is that not the case?
That's absolutely the case. We pay them as a...
That's how we write the contract. How many attorneys are going to want to come on for 10 hours?
Well, if they do, 100 dollars, that's 25 grand, right? If you're going to give them 250, it's 25 grand. So that's four grand a month we have.
We might need them only, need them for five hours worth of work.
You know, you... He might have a minimum of 20 hours.
Well, he could, he could set that.
The three councilmen have been gracious and generous enough to say they'll pay for them. Why don't you three get together, pick somebody, go pay for it?
Even if we all say that, it's 4,000 a month.
Yeah, we just need you to do the professional service agreement.
We need you to give special courtesy and allow us to do that. You're tying our hands.
It's, no, you are hiring the person, not us.
No, sir, you have to sign, you have to sign a contract saying it's okay. And you're telling us you're not going to do it, because you're going to invoke 404.
Maybe not if the city's not paying them, but I do have an issue with liability, so I do need to look at that.
I can't take the liability and hire them personally for me, indirectly for me. I mean, I didn't run for this office to have that liability. He needs to work through the city.
And just as we always do in any business, we ask them to add us to their, to their list of, of a cardholder and a policyholder, and add us to their insurance.
They won't work that way on a, on a professional...
You can add us, or, or we can tell them we'd like to have, for you to be able to come to us.
Just need to make sure and provide that they have...
That they have omissions?
Liability malpractice.
Sure. And 99.99% of the people do. What's the problem?
We can interview anybody we want, right? At this point, if we want to go and interview somebody, we can do it, right?
Yes. My suggestion is that it's up to you guys.
Why don't we just do it, and then find out what we...
You can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
How much it's going to cost, how it's going to work. Why don't we just do it? I don't know why we need, the mayor doesn't have to say, we can do it or we cannot do it.
Yes, he does.
He has to say yes when he does the contract.
Why would we do all that work if in the end, he's not going to follow through?
I'm open to seeing you...
Wouldn't we want to, wouldn't we want a commitment from our mayor?
I'm open to seeing you, uh, one by one next week and, and, and talking to you, as long as you want.
Mayor, we can do it here. It's an open meeting, and people want to hear it.
No, but I want to, I want to discuss the individuals.
Let's do it here, Mayor, because these people want to hear it. They want to talk.
I think it's better if you come to me and explain to me what it is you want to ask the person.
I'd ra, I'd rather have a discussion, I'd rather have a discussion, go over my paperwork, and have a discussion with the mayor prior to, you know, I mean, I, I'm going to agree with the mayor on this. I mean, we could have our discussion. We could still come back next meeting and have something out in public. But, I mean, we didn't even read through this packet. We've been asking for this letter since this project started. We got the letter an hour and a half ago.
I don't even know what the letter says. What letter did we ask for?
It's just, it's telling us what they're talking about doing now.
And we asked for that?
And I believe we're the only ones who have this so far. So we haven't had time to look at it.
Did we ask for this letter, or did the mayor ask for this letter?
Eric Shadalein asked for the letter.
Eric Shadalein's been asking for a letter.
You asked for a letter?
The mayor of Proton asked for it.
Okay.
I've been asking for a letter. What are your intents for the back of the property? They can't give me intents. So, once I read this, discuss it, talk to their attorney, talk to our mayor, talk to our city attorney, I'll be able to step forward and say more. But I think we need to get an attorney on retainer for the council.
Well, does the council want to have another special meeting, or went to the regular meeting to decide what person they want to, uh, advance as a consultant?
If we have to have a special meeting, I don't know how we could do it. I mean, we're going to have to have a special meeting if we're going to start to talk to attorneys.
The, the problem is, we're trying to rush this through. I, I think the whole thing's going to have to slow down a little bit.
I agree.
But that attorney needs to get on board pretty quick.
And, and I'm saying, we're rushing it. We're rushing it to accommodate the people who purchased the property. They just dropped this off August 7th, is when they brought this to us. They just dropped this off August 7th is when they brought this to us. I don't believe any municipality in the state of Louisiana would take a project this big and get it through in 30 days.
I haven't been there.
And if they can, they better people than us.
I think the mayor's asking to rush. I think the company.
I, I, I think if anyone, yeah, we're not asking them, they're not asking us to rush anything. They're following proper channels. They're submitting their paper purposes to any person who wanted to develop any piece of property in the City of Harahan. But I don't see them rushing anything. The only person I think that's rushing stuff is us.
I'm not rushing it.
Neither am I.
Well, Councilman, you had discussed with me saying that we'd like to return an attorney so we can have a proper vote by the fourth.
That's not a rush.
That's not what I said. My hopes were. No, my hopes were.
Attorney at the PNC meeting.
My hopes were maybe overzealous was to have additional counsel to guide the Planning and Zoning Board on Wednesday. That would be in a perfect world. That's obviously not going to happen.
And if it doesn't happen, we still have Mr. Villavasso that our attorney can talk to. I don't have nothing against him.
Absolutely not.
It cannot hurt to have more people involved.
Councilman, you said you've, you've already looked at some attorneys in this field. Can we, can we get that information and can we, can call these guys up and maybe?
Tomorrow morning, I will forward you the resumes and their contact information. Yes, sir.
I mean, we've contacted other attorneys who, they just haven't had time to get back with, you know, I mean.
Mr. Villavasso, do you mind going to the podium, please? I, I just have a simple question.
Sure.
And we've talked a lot about you tonight, and we're saying your name all over the place. But I think the one great thing out of all of this is that we have sung your praises. And we think that you do a wonderful job for the city and you, we don't need to keep on. We think you're great. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Would you be opposed? Or do you think it would be a positive thing if we sought additional counsel to assist you in guiding the city through the biggest commercial development or any development in rezoning that's ever happened to our city? Is this a positive thing? Would this help you or does this hinder something?
I, I think, I think it'd help you make your decision. It's, it's up to you. As, as some, some of you said, some committees do that with big projects. And, and you have to make the decision to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. I'm going to give you advice. David's going to give you advice. Planning Commission's going to give you advice.
Yes.
It's, it's up to you all.
Okay, I appreciate that. And as the mayor read off your resume, and I read it myself, it was unbelievably impressive. All of the planning boards that you have been on for the City of New Orleans and it went on and on. When you're on these boards and you're assisting a city through a process, how many people are on these committees and how many attorneys are giving their input? Is it one?
It's usually teams of experts, depending on the issues. It might be drainage experts. It might be other experts. Yeah.
That's all we're trying to do. Thank you. So is there a motion on the, on, I believe there's a motion and a second? That she stated that, what was that?
I remember.
Okay. She can, so to, to start the process.
Y'all can do that. You don't really need that motion. It's your call. Y'all can put this, you can put this on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Okay, so.
As, as either new or probably old business at this point.
Right.
And it gets on the agenda, therefore it's advertised. If you have someone and you decide you want to vote on that individual or individuals, you can do that. But, but the special, well, I don't want to get into anybody's, but my understanding was this was called so that y'all could have a discussion in the hopes that someone may get on board prior to the Planning and Zoning. That's clearly not going to happen. But you don't, at this point, you don't have to have another special meeting unless you want to have these people come and stand at the podium and you ask them questions. If you had three people, you may want to do that. I can tell you, experts don't really like to compete that way. And I don't know how many people you're going to get. It's probably better to meet with these people.
We needed a meeting to discuss how the process works because, you know, everybody, well, most, maybe, everybody doesn't know that we can't meet.
The issue is, as Councilman Murray says, are there any prejudice or bias with these people? Have any of them worked with Sterling before? Have any of them worked with Georges before?
Have they worked for us? Have they worked for the mayor?
It's a good question.
Have they worked for them? You know, there are good questions without a doubt. Do they have any conflict with any of us? One of them could have worked for one of us.
Maybe, maybe you invite them to come here or you get their resume and ask who their clientele is.
I think what the, I think what, and I second this motion, is that we begin the process of looking at the possibilities of having people in which to put into our arsenal. So therefore, would it be presumpt, this is new to me too. This is new to all of us. So we are needing guidance here. Mayor, have you ever done anything this big? In the City of Harahan? I don't think so in your previous administration, right?
Cindy, can I just interrupt one more time? Now, can we, can we?
You're making me lose my point.
Can we do interviews?
Okay, hang on. You're making me lose my point. Y'all don't want me to do that because then I'll ramble. Believe me, y'all really don't want me to ramble. So the point being is that, how do we begin the process, counsel? Where do we start? It is new to all of us. We would like to propose or see that we have someone else in our arsenal. We don't necessarily at this moment know who we need. A consultant might be the person that can work for us, and he has his staff that he has working for him. And he says, look, I'd like to work on, for instance, the subdivision law, big quickie. It has in there about sewage and drainage. He's got a staff member that he's going to tell, look, let's go take care of that. Let's go take a look at that. We need our, because he brought up, he brought up flooding and so forth. So we need to make sure that whoever we get can go, he's got good points on this side and they've got good points on this side. And the law says, right down the middle. So, because we're not lawyers. The only one on here that is a lawyer is our mayor. The mayor does not have a vote in this issue. The, the five of us have the sole responsibility of voting on such a massive, monumental piece of legislation that we will allow someone to come into this city and chop up the largest piece of property probably that is un, that is un, um.
Developed.
Used, undeveloped in this city parish east bank. And we don't want to make sure that we've got everything in our power, every arsenal, every, every consultant, anybody we need to get it done so that we protect our city, and he's telling me I'm rambling. I can't stress that enough. Don't tie my hands.
We know what we want to do.
Okay, so the next.
Can we, can we, can we interview? I mean, I don't want three attorneys per.
I don't want to do that either. That's not a proper way for.
John, if we legally can, like, can we legally interview people to get down to one person?
Not would.
To get one person to vote on for at a council meeting? You understand what I'm saying?
I probably need to have one of you or two of you do it because you're going to.
What if we, what if we select, what if we select, as Jefferson Parish does, a committee to look at several people who are either a lawyer or, let's use Ms.
It's going to take, it's going to take a long time.
That would take a long time?
With the committee.
Hey, it's a thought. It's a, it's a thought.
I, I called.
I'm throwing it out there.
I called two different law firms, three different law firms. One's going to send us a resume. The other one said he's got to check with his partners to make sure there's not a conflict. And another one said he's got a conflict. He can't take the case. He represented someone on colonial property already. And actually, two of them said they represented colonial property already. So, I mean, as we get their resumes, these attorneys, they're not going to want to come in here and have something against them. I mean, they're going to tell us upfront.
Absolutely not. I don't want, I don't want to waste their time. They cost too much. I don't want to waste our money. They cost too much. So, you know, where do we start the process? Do we have it in place so that if Mr. Villavasso, if the, if the council, if the, if, if our counselor needs some extra, that we have in place, set 25,000 or, or whatever? Because now we've taken that amount off the table because we've all agreed that we're either going to take our salaries or we're going to get somebody to do it.
But that's only 4,000 a month. Even if we take our salaries, it's only 4,000 a month.
That's just for one month. What if we do it for enough months?
I understand, but.
But here's, but let's take, let's, um, take money off the table. Take money off the table. Some guy out of space just gave us the money, okay? All right, so here we go. How do we start this process?
That's what I was asking the city attorney. Can we?
Yes.
Three of us can't get together.
Three of you can't do it together. One or two of you can't.
Two and two, two and two.
The question is, how should they start the process? My suggestion is, according to the Vice Statute 404, I would say come meet with the mayor next week on an individual basis. Let's discuss who you would like to put in. That's how I think the process ought to be started.
I think what Councilman Chatalane said too, you need resumes and you got to check for conflicts first. Tell them everybody that's involved. All of us as attorneys, we have conflict check software. We punch in the name. If you do litigation work, you punch in the name and it shows everybody. If I put in Chatalane, every Chatalane I've ever had for, against, or any involvement in cases is going to pop up on my screen.
Dakota too also is a, is a partner, right?
Yeah, you'd have to give all of the names, the entities. All of you as, they'll ask you this. These guys, they, they know.
They know. They don't want to get here and get caught in the middle.
So they will tell you what they need to know in order to determine if they have a conflict. You get, you're going to, you get their resume, you get referrals, you get recommendations.
But I would certainly like to get it whittled down to one before we.
And, and counsel.
Exactly.
I'm going to bet that this mayor will, because he knows gazillion attorneys in the city, that he will have conflict with almost everyone, that there will probably be only a few, in which we would have the availability to pick. The man's been in business for 34 to 50 years now.
Yeah, but if they know it's not a conflict, only if they've represented.
Only if they've represented him. Oh, okay. If they've represented him. So I'm glad to know that. That's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
I'm glad to be the point person on this. I've collected some data already and resumes and talked to a bunch of folks. So I'm glad to be point and start perusing and socializing the resumes with you guys. And, and we'll try and come to a very quick and efficient conclusion. The mayor will support our PSA agreement.
I want to ask the mayor.
I would recommend that we do it together.
We are a team. I want to do it together.
No, you and I.
We can't do it.
Oh, you and I, okay.
No, no, no. I think he means the mayor in conjunction with one or two of you. Well, one of you.
One or two.
One or two, one or two. You're right. He's the mayor. I take it back.
And David, would you be there for, for guidance for all of us?
I'm happy to. I can tell you guys now, and I'll say this publicly. There aren't that many experts in this field, guys.
I, I believe.
And I'll echo this, and I'm not blowing anybody's horn, but you know who we as lawyers hire when we need them? Villavasso.
Absolutely.
Most of the lawyers that you're going to contact.
For $75 an hour.
Most of the lawyers you're going to contact are going to know Steve Villavasso.
You're too cheap.
Steve.
Don't, don't say.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. There's about three of you.
And if they've been following this, they might not even want to get involved in this.
There's about three of these guys because they've probably done work or at least know of them. And there's only about three of those guys. And when you combine a JD, a law degree, with the qualifications of someone like him, it's going to become very limited. And I think your goal is to get somebody as qualified or more than Mr. Villavasso or your, or your money's not going to be well spent.
Yeah.
You know?
Absolutely.
Why don't you bring in who you want, Councilman Hewitt and myself, and pick one other councilman. We'll have the appointments at City Hall and we'll go through.
And I'll, I'll tell you this while y'all looking, you know, expert qualifications are important. Attorneys, we don't get qualified as experts. Okay, we don't. We hire experts.
I was qualified as an expert.
One time in your life.
One time in my life.
You know all about it, but.
In federal court.
Yeah, but a guy, if you, Steve Villavasso's been qualified, I don't know how many times, probably in the dozens, in, in courts, and that's a big deal. So keep that in mind too when you're looking.
And I must reiterate one thing. As we've said a couple of things, Mr. Villavasso is a very independent individual. And Mr. Villavasso does not have any malice in him, nor is he swayed by politicalness. Am I correct? He's here to do a job for us, and he does that job to the best of his abilities, without a doubt. My point of this is strictly that Mr. Villavasso, if needed, has more tools in his arsenal. That's simple.
I'm just trying to find out, what do you want the tool to do? Where you want it to fit?
I need a multi-function tool, Mayor. You got one in your back pocket?
No, I.
Me either.
So.
So now where do we go? We have a motion on, on the thing.
Are you, are you saying that you want this process to begin before the next meeting?
Yes.
For the next council meeting?
Right.
Yes, I can start tomorrow.
So no special meeting?
Unless the, the rest of the council believes it's necessary.
Unless we come up with someone that we think we could hit to join board.
For now, put it on the next council meeting.
Let's put it on the agenda for next meeting.
You can call a special meeting. But at least you know you have it on the agenda.
Okay, so the procedure is.
Go out and find as many. It'll be advertised.
Go out and find as many lawyers as you want. Make an appointment with me and Councilman Hewitt and one other councilman at City Hall, and we'll interview them.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the, so the motion still remains on the board. So can you call for the?
We don't need it, but, well, we don't need to vote.
We, well, we need to vote that we're going to do this.
You don't?
We don't. So everybody's in total agrees?
The only vote required is to hire the attorney and pay that person more than $500.
So the agreement is, so we don't need a vote to, that we've agreed to hire, to look at the, to open the process.
You can if you want, but you don't have to. It's your call. The process is, has already begun. It's up to you.
Yeah, let's call for the vote.
What's the motion?
I think the motion, if I can help.
We're going to say it again?
Go ahead then, if you're.
The motion is to employ a practicing attorney. Right.
Or consultant.
To begin looking.
Or consultant.
To begin the process.
To begin the process, to employ a practicing attorney to help guide us through this process.
Does a consultant need to be attorney? That's right.
Yeah, you don't want, I don't know that you want to limit it, do you?
Well, this is a motion. And this isn't anything in writing. So why, why does the verbiage have to be perfect? I'm asking.
Because it's going to be in the minutes.
I have a question. The Councilman Chatalane and the Councilman Landry, they want to know. Can you have a consultant apply as none of the.
A land use expert.
Okay.
That's a good use, land use expert.
And/or.
Is that a good word?
Attorney?
And/or.
And/or attorney.
There you go.
Professional.
Is that what you would like to have help you? Would be a land, a land use expert? No, no, I'm asking you.
We call, we call him when we need a land use expert.
So my question, who would you like in your arsenal to help you out on your team?
I'd rather.
An expert.
Do you know any?
In?
No, I'd rather them not say.
Why don't you submit somebody? Can you tell us, give us a hint?
Don't put him on the spot like that.
Then you're not, you're not achieving the goal that you are.
No, don't put him on the spot. Absolutely not.
You're looking for, I mean, I don't believe anybody's accusing anyone of not being independent, but you want another independent person. If you do that, you're not getting it.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Absolutely. So.
I have some very good leads.
So we're going to vote?
What's the motion?
The motion is to begin the process to employ a land use expert slash attorney in that area to assist the city. Mr. Villavasso, the mayor, in any and all land use issues involving the property formerly known as Colonial Country Club.
Okay, now do we have to put the issues out for this attorney or not?
I don't know that y'all know what the issues are at this point.
No, wait, we just.
I don't know that there will be any issues. That may, may not.
There may not be an issue.
We have, we have 1333 in a subdivision article. You got to stay within that framework. If you don't, guess what? It's pretty simple for you. I mean, you don't need a lawyer to tell you that they exceeded 35 feet in height if it comes, if it, if it requires 35 feet. So I don't think y'all know the issues yet.
You're correct.
So that's the motion.
And it can be, she can adopt what I said.
Sure.
I adopted what you say. I seconded.
You have it down?
I seconded, Madam Clerk.
All in favor, in discussion? All in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed? Five days, no names.
Thank you.
We have addressed the council.
Anyone wish to, it looks like they leave.
And executive session?
Yeah, anyone wish to address the council?
Hi, Terry Valenti, 191 Colonial Club Drive. This project, this commercial project's obviously going to greatly affect my property value and, in many, many ways, which I've enumerated so many times before this council. I would first like to thank Ms. Hewitt for standing up for the citizens of Harahan and calling this meeting. Thank you very much. And also Councilwoman Murray for her continued support and open-mindedness for what, how we feel. We definitely, a group of us, feel that the mayor is dead set on doing this. He is bulldozing as hard as he can, straight through. He doesn't listen to us. He doesn't care how we feel and we appreciate to have these two women on the other end of the table who are saying they need to consider our feelings in this and to look at things carefully. There are so many things that have been talked about here tonight and, Mr. Villavasso, I know that it has been pretty much a love fest. And I don't propose to disagree with any of your qualifications, but I did send the mayor a Freedom of Information request concerning dealings with Mr. Villavasso. I have heard from numerous council people here that he is the city planner. There is, unless you count a 2004 agreement, which I submit does not contain all of the requirements to constitute a contract signed between Mr. Villavasso and Paul Johnson. Nothing was, I asked for contracts, so there was no other contract given. So, he does not appear if you go by what? Mayor Moscow? And I, I don't have a problem, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm unfairly dragging Mr. Villavasso in this because my problem is with the mayor. The mayor gave me two invoices from Mr. Villavasso. They were one-page invoices covering six-month period of times. Nothing was itemized. I'm, I'm a private investigator. I have clients. I have to send in an invoice. I have to itemize every day what I did and the time increments that it took to do that. Now, I'm not saying Mr. Villavasso didn't send that, but the mayor did not produce it. And in addition to that, through the documents that...
Was it a clerical error?
Well, he's had a lot of clerical errors, if that is true, because there have been other Freedom of Information Acts where the mayor didn't give everything that was asked for. On one of those invoices, there was clearly noted that there was another amount that was billed, that that invoice wasn't produced to us. And the agreement between Mr. Johnson and Mr. Villavasso in 2004 was that Mr. Villavasso would bill monthly an itemized bill. Now, part of our concerns in this whole thing is that the city's money has been mismanaged. And I wanted to also point out that, that the pay stubs or the documentation attached to those invoices where they were paid said that they were attributed to legal fees and So, I don't know, I can't, I mean, how can we make heads or tails of it when we didn't get everything clearly? You can look at the documents and see that we didn't get everything that we asked for. Is he the city planner? Is he working in the capacity of an attorney? Does he have, you're talking about the omissions clauses? Do we have a contract where we're protected for anything that he does? And another thing, y'all talked about conflicts and conflicts with these attorneys, and I understand conflicts. I've worked in law offices. I work with law offices. I, I truly get the conflict thing. It's very serious. And what nobody up here proposed to ask Mr. Villavasso is, does he have a conflict? Has he ever worked for Mr. Wayne Dakota or Mr. John Georges? And I, I, I believe that he's probably a very ethical and respectable man and so I believe he will look and if he has a conflict, he will withdraw. Well, I hope, I hope you're right. But you know...
I mean, I don't think, don't you have a copy of the contract?
Well, then, why can't you ask the mayor why he can't give the citizens what they ask for? You know, we have to jump through rings to get anything from him.
Mr. Villavasso, have you worked for Georges or Dakota?
I worked for Wayne Dakota 12 years ago.
Thank you.
That's not a conflict. That's not a conflict.
What constitutes a conflict?
All I can say is that maybe the, um...
Perhaps the citizens think it is.
It's son, or his son 12 years ago. That's not a conflict. You know, you can ask yourself, you can do that, my word.
What's that?
If it's a continuing situation, but if the project is done and completed, even as lawyers, if we've represented somebody, some lawyers won't do it if there is, if they've ever even been involved in it, some do. But under the law, there is a test, which I can give you guys. I don't know it off the top of my head, but generally speaking, if you've worked on a project for somebody and it's fully completed and there's no lingering of that project, you may be able to work against that person even later on. And that does happen. The big law firms out there, you know, I worked at Adams and Reese a very long time ago. They're one of, they're probably the biggest, I think they're the biggest law firm. Other firms, they have so many conflicts and they work around them if they can. So there is, there are absolute answers. For example, if he was still representing the Dakotas, it'd be very simple. If it's been 12 years for Mr. Dakota's son and the project is over, we'd have to look at it, but I would say that it's not a conflict.
Like you said, there was, there's very few attorneys in that field, in land use. I mean, that's, the big bucks aren't in that field, I wouldn't imagine. If you only had three or four attorneys in the city that are in that field, it's kind of hard to avoid a conflict with big developers like Sterling and Dakota and Georges.
It may be hard, but that's the way it is. It is not only, and, and I'm sure that Mr. Corcel will tell...
Look, we're looking at the end, also. I'm not looking to lose part of our, our team.
I understand what Mr. Corcel is saying, that there is a legal test and he may pass that legal test, but the whole ethical conflict thing is based around the appearance of impropriety. If he did a big job for Mr. Dakota 12 years ago and now he is, and also I might add that part of this is that some of us believe that Mr. Villavasso gave an opinion sometime in the past that colonial should never be developed. And now he seems to be flip-flopping on it. So what is the appearance if he has worked for one of the owners of the property who has financial things to gain from it and now he's changed his opinion? We get stuck with the results of that. And what if in the future he gets more work from these millionaires because he helped get this thing through? I'm not saying that's what he's doing. I, I just called Ms. Hewitt and apologized to her for asking her to recuse herself publicly and said, "I handled it wrong." And I, the difference is with Mr. Villavasco is he is an attorney and I think he understands. I'm not saying he's doing anything wrong. I want that to be clear. But I'm saying, as a citizen, we are concerned, and especially when we ask the mayor for a contract, it is not given to us. We ask him for invoices, it is not given to us. No member on this council has ever apparently asked Mr. Villavasso had he worked for Dakota or Georges. He's friends with Georges on his Facebook. Well, you can laugh. I, I might laugh at the fact that you came and said that you would never vote to, that you wanted my vote to protect the property, the colonial property. I could kind of giggle at that.
I think I've worked very hard to do it.
I, I'm saying it gives the appearance of impropriety and there is a lot of appearances of impropriety here with dealing with this mayor. So it is through his efforts and what he has done that has caused all this concern. And y'all are sitting, talking over and over and over about asking these attorneys about conflict and contracts and errors and omissions clauses. And I don't think you've ever asked Mr. Villavasso about any of those things.
It's a good question. I just trust him. I mean, he's a friend.
That is not how you do business when you have your neighborhoods who are about to be flooded by what you're about to do. And you're talking about paying for legal fees. Let's fast forward two years, three years down the line. You people have approved a commercial development that floods me or floods three people back there or 10 people back there. You have exposure for that. How, how do you think the citizens are going to pay for those legal fees? There is a case, Eschep versus the City of New Orleans that went to the Supreme Court. You put the city under the exposure of liability by what you do in allowing the rezoning of that property, which is a holding pond to keep water away from your citizens. And if you allow it and anybody floods, you will be exposed to liability. You will have...
But houses would do the same thing, right?
I'm sorry?
Houses would do the same thing.
That's true. But not as much. But it is true.
I don't think we have a full drainage study. I don't think anyone should comment on it.
But I mean, I, 200 houses are going to drain to do as just as much back as 15 acres.
I don't think that you have the expertise to say that. I don't...
Twenty years. We watched Imperial Woods for 20 years. This is going to take...
It just strays away. You're, you're talking about, you don't want to spend the money and you want, you, you don't want to get an attorney. You all are, you know, concerned about all these issues with getting an attorney, but you have not been concerned with, with seeing if Mr. Villavasso has any kind of conflict. I can tell you, if it passes the legal test, it passes the legal test, but it does not pass the stink test.
If he worked for a site 12 years ago...
We're going to take the city attorney's opinion on that.
Sure. I really don't enjoy responding and I'm not going to respond to the foolish personal attacks because they're foolish and personal. But the one substantive thing that was just brought up was whether or not myself or the group that was working has taken a position on this. So here's the land use and zoning issue that was mentioned in the last 10 minutes of foolishness. And that is, yes, indeed, we remember what the initial recommendation was for this piece of property. The recommendation was to zone it POR. Everybody remember that? Parks and open space. And let's remember the history. The council zoned it POR. And the night after it was zoned POR, the city of Harahan was sued for $50 million in federal court. That lawsuit was handled by teams of lawyers.